Good evening. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting of the Guthrie Public Schools Board of Education to order for Monday, August 14th, 2023. Would you please call the roll?
Davis?
Here.
Smedley?
Here.
Gerard?
Here.
Schroeder?
Here.
Pearson?
Here.
Salee?
Here.
Plag?
Here.
Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great body for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we'll observe a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, we're going to start off with comments to the board by citizens' registry speak.
We have none.
Okay. Any by board members? Okay, moving right along. And now to the highlight of the evening, superintendent's report.
As you can imagine, it's rather lengthy tonight. Just a reminder that normally, this board meeting, sometimes it falls earlier than on the calendar than what it did this year, and we are required to have a special board meeting to ratify the negotiated contract, negotiated agreement with GACT. Tonight, we were able to meld all of that together into one, which will probably lengthen this meeting a little bit, but keep us from having to have a special board meeting. First of all, I want to give special thanks to our custodial and maintenance staff for their work this summer. And Mr. Thompson, he and I were joking about, early in the summer, about how this is going to be a fairly light summer with regard to maintenance and everything. And he and I kind of bemoaned each other earlier today and over the weekend about how it has been anything but with, given some of the challenges that we faced with heat and air systems, along with still having challenges with supply chain and labor issues on finishing up our projects. And I'll give an update about that here in just a little bit. Last Friday, we had the annual all-school convocation. We heard from GPS Teacher of the Year Cheryl Green and Representative John Tally, who both provided encouraging words as we entered the school year. And I can't thank both of them enough for the message that they brought, because it was one of hope, and I think it was very well received by our staff. I've heard numerous compliments about, Representative Tally, he and I are longtime friends, over 40 years, and he told a little on himself about his, how he grew up and the importance of teachers in his life. And I thought it was a very, very powerful message. Meet the Teacher for all elementary and guest students, along with the junior high open house, was today and is just now concluding. High school freshman orientation is going on now. Couple of updates facility-wise, as guests will have a temporary chiller placed tomorrow until all the parts we're waiting on arrive and repairs can be completed on the chiller that serves that building. That chiller's operating at 50% capacity, and it would, if we had, if we knew every day until we got the parts and could get it fixed was going to be like today, we'd be fine. But we don't know that, and we know that when it gets into triple digits, that system cannot keep up. And if it taxes the remaining half that is working properly and it goes down, it really would create a tremendous hardship, considering especially that we have the high number of special education students in those, in that wing at the building. Final inspections and cleaning on the last two sets of restrooms, as well as the faculty restrooms at the high school, will occur tomorrow, just in time to start school, knock on wood. As you know, the first day of school is Wednesday, August 16th. I've already prepared our city manager for, this will be his first time that he's seen a first day of school in Guthrie, and prepared him for what that looks like, so that he was not taken aback by it. A little bit about enrollment. I put a Facebook post out this afternoon, but at 11:30 this morning, we had 250 students who were with us last year that had not begun enrollment at all online. And by 6:00 PM today, that number was down to 210. There were 48 student registrations that had begun but not completed that finished this afternoon also. So all told, we, from 11:30 until 6 o'clock, when I looked at it last, we had 113 students that completed their enrollment this afternoon. We were trying to avoid the scenario that we have 300 students that show up on our doorstep on Wednesday morning that have not begun the enrollment process, because that's, it's not possible for the elementary staffs or the secondary staffs to handle those enrollments and begin school. And so we're trying to nudge everyone along and get them to where they're, where they can kind of get everybody enrolled, so that we can get everything started on Wednesday morning. A reminder to the board and also announcement for the community, September 24th, we will have a board, September 25th, I'm sorry, have a board retreat at Meridian Technology Center South Campus. That is a Monday morning. We will be formulating that agenda and the topics to be discussed, some of which will be how the future of the district with regard to facilities and needs and priorities as we begin another long-range planning process. I will be joining Dr. Doug Major from Meridian and Dr. Ruth Jackson, the interim president of Langston University, at the Guthrie Chamber of Commerce State of the Schools Luncheon at Meridian Technology Center South Campus on August 28th at 11:30 AM. If any of you board members would like to attend the luncheon, we can make necessary arrangements for you to attend. See, Samantha and we'll talk about making the arrangements. A reminder that the OSSBA COSA Conference is scheduled for August 24th through the 27th in Oklahoma City, and, is that all right? Because I thought, okay. Make sure I've got my dates right here. The, I'm sorry, the State of the School Luncheon is the 24th. 24th at 11:30 AM. Apologies for that. I knew there was a discrepancy, because I know that it's also on top of the conference. We have two board members that have registered to attend at this time. The last thing that I wanted to discuss is the growth of our net assessed valuation within our district. We got the numbers just recently, and I sent them to you in an email, but it is the highest growth that we've seen since in my now 12 years as your superintendent, at 9.13%. It eclipsed last year's highest, which was 9.1%. All of that with the fact that we have all of the homes that have been platted, but the improvements have not been made with regard to the building there, for the most part. Mission Hills, I saw they've got, I think, four homes that are, the stem walls are going up in the second portion of that build, and then they're starting on some of the ones now and piling. But as that number continues to grow, we also know that that's going to involve growth within the district as well. So that's, that's good news, but it's also challenging news that we've got to be prepared for. That's my report.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Simpson. Item A on our agenda this evening is the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second. There's been a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroeder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven I, zero N's.
Motion passes. Item nine in our business agenda, Item A, is the recommendation, consideration, and action to calculate the 2023-2024 school year by instructional hours.
We bring this to you annually in order to provide us flexibility as we begin the school year, so that we can, we will still have the calendar with 174, 75 days, I can't remember for sure, of instruction, and 180 days total. But if weather conditions or something else requires that we reduce that, it gives us flexibility as we go through the year. Recommend approval.
Mr. President, I move that we calculate the 2023-2024 school year by instructional hours.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second to calculate the 2023-2024 school year by instructional hours. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroeder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven I, zero N's.
Motion passes. Item nine in our business agenda, Item A, is the recommendation, consideration, and action to calculate the 2023-2024 school year by instructional hours.
We bring this to you annually in order to provide us flexibility as we begin the school year, so that we can, we will still have the calendar with 174, 75 days, I can't remember for sure, of instruction, and 180 days total. But if weather conditions or something else requires that we reduce that, it gives us flexibility as we go through the year. Recommend approval.
Mr. President, I move that we calculate the 2023-2024 school year by instructional hours.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second to calculate the 2023-2024 school year by instructional hours. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroeder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven I, zero N's.
Motion passes. Item nine C is the recommendation, consideration, and action upon agreement with the City of Guthrie for school resource officers provided by the Guthrie Police Department for 2023-2024.
You'll remember, in the middle of last year, we amended our agreement with the City of Guthrie, where we took on the full salary of one of their officers, and the city then paid us for the balance, so that the financial consideration was of no financial impact to the district. And we maintain the SRO arrangements as far as staffing that we've had for the past, like, six years, I would say. So this is, this is a continuation of that for this school year, and would recommend approval.
Mr. President, I make a motion we approve the agreement with the City of Guthrie for school resource officers provided by Guthrie Police Department for 2023-2024.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second to approve the agreement with the City of Guthrie for school resource officers provided by the Guthrie Police Department for 2023-2024. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroeder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven I, zero N's.
Motion passes. Item nine D is the recommendation, consideration, and action upon agreement with the City of Guthrie for school resource officers provided by Guthrie Police Department for 2023-2024.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second to approve the agreement with the City of Guthrie for school resource officers provided by Guthrie Police Department for 2023-2024.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroeder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven I, zero N's.
Motion passes. Item nine F is the recommendation, consideration, and action upon agreement with the University of Oklahoma National Center for Disability Education and Training.
This, we have done this for, oh, Angie, how long have we had this agreement?
I think this is our fourth year.
Yeah. This is a, it helps our special need students transition to the workplace after they leave us, and it just provides us additional resources to assist them in transitioning into the workplace, and is at no cost to us. Would recommend approval.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the agreement with the University of Oklahoma National Center for Disability Education and Training.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second to approve the agreement with the City of Guthrie for school resource officers provided by the Guthrie Police Department for 2023-2024. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroeder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven I, zero N's.
Motion passes. Item nine F is the recommendation, consideration, and action upon agreement with the City of Guthrie for school resource officers provided by the Guthrie Police Department for 2023-2024.
You'll remember, in the middle of last year, we amended our agreement with the City of Guthrie, where we took on the full salary of one of their officers, and the city then paid us for the balance, so that the financial consideration was of no financial impact to the district. And we maintain the SRO arrangements as far as staffing that we've had for the past, like, six years, I would say. So this is, this is a continuation of that for this school year, and would recommend approval.
Mr. President, I make a motion we approve the agreement with the City of Guthrie for school resource officers provided by Guthrie Police Department for 2023-2024.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second to approve the agreement with the City of Guthrie for school resource officers provided by the Guthrie Police Department for 2023-2024. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroeder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven I, zero N's.
Motion passes. Item nine C is the recommendation, consideration, and action upon agreement with the City of Guthrie for school resource officers provided by the Guthrie Police Department for 2023-2024.
You'll remember, in the middle of last year, we amended our agreement with the City of Guthrie, where we took on the full salary of one of their officers, and the city then paid us for the balance, so that the financial consideration was of no financial impact to the district. And we maintain the SRO arrangements as far as staffing that we've had for the past, like, six years, I would say. So this is, this is a continuation of that for this school year, and would recommend approval.
Mr. President, I make a motion we approve the agreement with the City of Guthrie for school resource officers provided by Guthrie Police Department for 2023-2024.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second to approve the agreement with the City of Guthrie for school resource officers provided by the Guthrie Police Department for 2023-2024. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroeder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven I, zero N's.
Motion passes. Item nine B is the recommendation, consideration, and action upon authorizing Ms. Jana Wonzler as an authorized representative for the Child Nutrition Fund.
This is similar to several action items that we brought to you last month with regard to requirements that the board delegate that authority to a certain staff member, and we would recommend approval.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the authorization of Ms. Jana Wonzler as authorized representative for the Child Nutrition Program.
Second. There's a motion in a second to authorize Ms. Jana Wonzler as the authorized representative for the Child Nutrition Program. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroeder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven I, zero N's.
Motion passes. Item nine C is the recommendation, consideration, and action upon agreement with the City of Guthrie for school resource officers provided by Guthrie Police Department for 2023-2024.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second to approve the agreement with the City of Guthrie for school resource officers provided by the Guthrie Police Department for 2023-2024.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroeder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven I, zero N's.
Motion passes. Item nine C is the recommendation, consideration, and action upon agreement with the City of Guthrie for school resource officers provided by the Guthrie Police Department for 2023-2024.
You'll remember, in the middle of last year, we amended our agreement with the City of Guthrie, where we took on the full salary of one of their officers, and the city then paid us for the balance, so that the financial consideration was of no financial impact to the district. And we maintain the SRO arrangements as far as staffing that we've had for the past, like, six years, I would say. So this is, this is a continuation of that for this school year, and would recommend approval.
Mr. President, I make a motion we approve the agreement with the City of Guthrie for school resource officers provided by Guthrie Police Department for 2023-2024.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second to approve the agreement with the City of Guthrie for school resource officers provided by the Guthrie Police Department for 2023-2024. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroeder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven I, zero N's.
Motion passes. Item nine D is the recommendation, consideration, and action upon agreement with Oklahoma Therapy Consultants, Inc., to provide occupational therapy during 2023-2024 school year.
This is, this was a late addition to our board packet, so this did not seek committee, but it was, we were been trying to find an occupational therapist contractor, because this is the one, Angie, that we had on staff last year and don't have this year, is that correct?
Yeah, this is the one that was barge-walled last year.
That's right. That's right. And, and we feel like it's, it will be, it'll better serve our students, obviously, to have someone physically present. We've, and have we contracted with these folks before?
Yes, why?
Okay. Okay. So we recommend approval with them.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the agreement with Oklahoma Therapy Consultants, Inc., to provide occupational therapy during 2023-2024 school year.
Second. There's been a motion in a second to approve the agreement with Oklahoma Therapy Consultants, Inc., to provide occupational therapy during 2023-2024 school year. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroeder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven I, zero N's.
Motion passes. Item nine H is the recommendation, consideration, and action upon approval of agreement with Tiffany Kites to provide speech therapy services for 2023-2024 school year.
I had these two confused. This is the one that we had a speech therapist on staff last year for, we're unable to fill that position, so we need to have a contract speech therapist to provide, to work with our students that are eligible for those services, and would recommend approval.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the agreement with Tiffany Kites to provide speech therapy services for the 2023 and 2024 school year.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second to approve the agreement with Tiffany Kites to provide speech therapy services for 2023-2024 school year. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroeder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven I, zero N's.
Motion passes. Item nine I is the recommendation, consideration, and action upon agreement with Crossland Construction for Construction Management Services.
This agreement, it's the same agreement that we've had with, with Evan Sports LLC for broadcasting and streaming rights for 2023-2024. Page 190, 191 is this agreement. It's the same agreement that we've had with, with Evan Sports for the streaming, and they have first, first rights to those, to those broadcasts. And this is, there is a state law that requires that we do this, so that a visiting team cannot deny our first granted firm of rights to broadcast. Recommend approval.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the agreement with Evan Sports LLC for broadcasting and streaming rights for 2023-2024.
Second. There's been a motion in a second to approve the agreement with Evan Sports LLC for broadcasting and streaming rights for 2023-2024. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroeder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven I, zero N's.
Motion passes. Item nine H is the recommendation, consideration, and action upon approval of agreement with Tiffany Kites to provide speech therapy services for 2023-2024 school year.
I had these two confused. This is the one that we had a speech therapist on staff last year for, we're unable to fill that position, so we need to have a contract speech therapist to provide, to work with our students that are eligible for those services, and would recommend approval.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the agreement with Tiffany Kites to provide speech therapy services for the 2023 and 2024 school year.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second to approve the agreement with Tiffany Kites to provide speech therapy services for 2023-2024 school year. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroeder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven I, zero N's.
Motion passes. Item nine F is the recommendation, consideration, and action upon agreement with the University of Oklahoma National Center for Disability Education and Training.
This, we have done this for, oh, Angie, how long have we had this agreement?
I think this is our fourth year.
Yeah. This is a, it helps our special need students transition to the workplace after they leave us, and it just provides us additional resources to assist them in transitioning into the workplace, and is at no cost to us. Would recommend approval.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the agreement with the University of Oklahoma National Center for Disability Education and Training.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second to approve the agreement with the City of Guthrie for school resource officers provided by the Guthrie Police Department for 2023-2024. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroeder?
There's been a motion and a second to approve the agreement with Evan Sports LLC for broadcasting and streaming rights for 2023, 2024. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smithley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Clag?
Yes.
Seven I, zero Nace.
Motion passes. Item 9F is the recommendation, consideration, and action upon agreement with University of Oklahoma National Center for Disability Education and Training.
This, uh, we have done this for, um, oh, Angie, how long have we had this agreement?
I think this is our fourth year.
Yeah, um, this is a, it helps our special need students transition to the workplace, um, after they leave us, and it's just provides us additional resources to assist them in transitioning into the workplace and is at no cost to us. Would recommend approval.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the agreement with University of Oklahoma National Center for Disability Education and Training.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the agreement with the University of Oklahoma National Center for Disability Education and Training. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Davis?
Yes.
Smithley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Clag?
Yes.
Seven I, zero Nace.
Motion passes. Item 9G is the recommendation, consideration, and action upon agreement with Oklahoma Therapy Consultants, Inc. to provide occupational therapy during 2023, 2024 school year.
This is a, this was a late addition to our board packet, uh, so this did not seek committee, but it was, we were been trying to find, uh, an occupational therapist contractor because, uh, this is the one, Angie, that we had on staff last year and don't have this year, is that correct?
Yeah, this is the one that was brought to us last year.
That's right, that's right. And, uh, and we feel like it's, it will be, uh, it'll better serve our students, obviously, to have someone, uh, physically present. Uh, we've, and have we contracted with these folks before?
Yes, why?
Okay.
First time or second.
Okay, so we recommend approval with them.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the agreement with Oklahoma Therapy Consultants, Inc. to provide occupational therapy during 2023, 2024 school year.
Second. There's been a motion and a second to approve the agreement with Oklahoma Therapy Consultants, Inc. to provide occupational therapy during 2023, 2024 school year. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smithley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Clag?
Yes.
Seven I, zero Nace.
Motion passes. Item 9H is the recommendation, consideration, and action upon approval of agreement with Tiffany Kites to provide speech therapy services for 2023, 2024 school year.
I had these two confused. This is the one that we had a speech therapist on staff last year for, we're unable to fill that position, so we need to have a contract speech therapist to provide, uh, to work with our students that are eligible for those services, and would recommend approval.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the agreement with Tiffany Kites to provide speech therapy services for the 2023 and 2024 school year.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the agreement with Tiffany Kites to provide speech therapy services for 2023, 2024 school year. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smithley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Clag?
Yes.
Seven I, zero Nace.
Motion passes. Item 9I, 9I is the recommendation, consideration, and action upon approval of contract with Crossland Construction for construction management services.
This, uh, this agreement that you have, uh, in front of you on pages 207 to 296, um, is the culmination of a, a lot of work with, um, with our attorneys, with the Crossland attorneys, and, um, we have, I can assure you, gone through this, uh, with a fine-toothed comb to make sure that, uh, we are, uh, that our attorneys are satisfied and, uh, Crossland is agreeable to all of this. Bottom line to this is, um, getting this thing, um, approved tonight will allow us to move forward in a timely fashion with all of the work at Cotterill, but I will say that Crossland has been, um, very attentive and already been doing some of the work even though we did not have a signed contract, uh, in order to keep this, uh, keep this project moving along. Um, I think this, uh, I think this, um, the cost of this is, um, I was pleased with what they offered, and, uh, it was less than what our previous construction manager had by, by a significant amount, and I think they have a strong track record of, uh, performing, because when I, when we went through the RFP process, the thing that struck me about Crossland is the number of school districts that are repeat customers with them, and they're not, uh, they're not jumping to someone else, they like the work that they're doing. And so, uh, happy to bring this one to you and excited about, uh, what's next with it. So I would recommend approval.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the contract with Crossland Construction for construction management services.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the contract with Crossland Construction for construction management services. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smithley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Clag?
Yes.
Seven I, zero Nace.
Motion passes. Item 10 is the proposed executive session for the purpose of discussing employment of personnel, FMLA request, resignation, separation from employment, and transfer of position request, all as set out on the personnel reports, extra duty assignments as listed for 2023, 2024, and teacher negotiations for 2023, 2024, support personnel handbook for 2023, 2024, and administrator's handbook and salary schedule for 2023, 2024, discussing purchase or appraisal of real property, disclosure of which information would violate the confidentiality requirements of state under federal law, all pursuant to 25 Oklahoma statute, section 307B, 1, 2, 3, and 7.
Mr. President.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to move an executive session, roll call vote.
Davis?
Yes.
Smithley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Clag?
Yes.
Seven I, zero Nace.
Motion passes.
We do have one resignation after the fact.
Okay.
I forgot to.
Oh, yes, I do. I have it ready. Sorry.
Okay. Only items in Agenda Number 10 were discussed and executed.
We're going to have one resignation after the fact. I forgot to tell you.
Oh, yes, I do. I have it ready. Sorry.
Okay, only items in Agenda Number 10 were discussed in executive session and no votes were taken. This shall constitute the executive session minutes. Item Number 11 is to vote on action as set out on the personnel reports.
Motion to approve the personnel reports.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the personnel reports. Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salie?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven, nine, zero, and ace.
Motion passes. Item 12 is action upon recommendation of extra duty assignments as listed for 2023, 2024.
I move we approve the extra duty assignments as listed for 2023, 2024.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the personnel reports. Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salie?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven, nine, zero, and ace.
Motion passes. Item 12 is action upon recommendation of extra duty assignments as listed for 2023, 2024.
I move we approve the extra duty assignments as listed for 2023, 2024.
Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salie?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven, nine, zero, and ace.
Motion passes. Item 13 is recommendation consideration and action upon approval of Justin Galloway to be classified as adjunct teacher for eighth grade U.S. History at Guthrie Junior High.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve Justin Galloway to be classified as adjunct teacher for eighth grade U.S. History at Guthrie Junior High.
Second. There's been a motion and a second to approve the employment of Franklin Ward.
Mr. President, I move we rescind the employment of Franklin Ward.
Second. There's been a motion and a second to rescind the employment of Franklin Ward. Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salie?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven, nine, zero, and ace.
Motion passes. Item 18 is the recommendation consideration and action to approve the contract for purchase of real property.
This property we have been in negotiations with is located at 213 East Vilas, located near the stadium. There is a house on it currently, and we recommend approval. The sale price is $79,500.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the contract for the purchase of real property stated by Dr. Simpson.
Second. There's been a motion and a second to approve the support handbook for 2023, 2024. Motion passes. Item 19 is the recommendation consideration and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of this agenda.
We have one. It was submitted from Chris Haggard to his supervisor on August 7th. Recommend acceptance.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the resignation of Chris Haggard.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the support handbook for 2023, 2024. Motion passes. Item 20 is discussion and motion to rescind the employment of Franklin Ward. Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salie?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven, nine, zero, and ace.
Motion passes. Item 18 is the recommendation consideration and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of this agenda.
We have one. It was submitted from Chris Haggard to his supervisor on August 7th. Recommend acceptance.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the contract for the purchase of real property stated by Dr. Simpson.
Second. There's been a motion and a second to approve the support handbook for 2023, 2024. Motion passes. Item 19 is the recommendation consideration and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of this agenda.
We have one. It was submitted from Chris Haggard to his supervisor on August 7th. Recommend acceptance.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the contract for the purchase of real property stated by Dr. Simpson.
Second. There's been a motion and a second to approve the support handbook for 2023, 2024. Motion passes. Item 19 is the recommendation consideration and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of this agenda.
We have one. It was submitted from Chris Haggard to his supervisor on August 7th. Recommend acceptance.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the contract for the purchase of real property stated by Dr. Simpson.
Second. There's been a motion and a second to approve the support handbook for 2023, 2024. Motion passes. Item 19 is the recommendation consideration and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of this agenda.
We have one. It was submitted from Chris Haggard to his supervisor on August 7th. Recommend acceptance.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the contract for the purchase of real property stated by Dr. Simpson.
Second. There's been a motion and a second to approve the support handbook for 2023, 2024. Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salie?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven, nine, zero, and ace.
Motion passes. Item 18 is the recommendation consideration and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of this agenda.
We have one. It was submitted from Chris Haggard to his supervisor on August 7th. Recommend acceptance.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the contract for the purchase of real property stated by Dr. Simpson.
Second. There's been a motion and a second to approve the support handbook for 2023, 2024. Motion passes. Item 19 is the recommendation consideration and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of this agenda.
We have one. It was submitted from Chris Haggard to his supervisor on August 7th. Recommend acceptance.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the contract for the purchase of real property stated by Dr. Simpson.
Second. There's been a motion and a second to approve the support handbook for 2023, 2024. Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salie?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven, nine, zero, and ace.
Motion passes. Item 19 is the recommendation consideration and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of this agenda.
We have one. It was submitted from Chris Haggard to his supervisor on August 7th. Recommend acceptance.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the contract for the purchase of real property stated by Dr. Simpson.
Second. There's been a motion and a second to approve the support handbook for 2023, 2024. Motion passes. Item 19 is the recommendation consideration and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of this agenda.
We have one. It was submitted from Chris Haggard to his supervisor on August 7th. Recommend acceptance.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the contract for the purchase of real property stated by Dr. Simpson.
Second. There's been a motion and a second to approve the support handbook for 2023, 2024. Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salie?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven, nine, zero, and ace.
Motion passes. Item 19 is the recommendation consideration and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of this agenda.
We have one. It was submitted from Chris Haggard to his supervisor on August 7th. Recommend acceptance.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the contract for the purchase of real property stated by Dr. Simpson.
Second. There's been a motion and a second to approve the support handbook for 2023, 2024. Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salie?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven, nine, zero, and ace.
Motion passes. Item 19 is the recommendation consideration and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of this agenda.
We have one. It was submitted from Chris Haggard to his supervisor on August 7th. Recommend acceptance.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the contract for the purchase of real property stated by Dr. Simpson.
Second. There's been a motion and a second to approve the support handbook for 2023, 2024. Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salie?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven, nine, zero, and ace.
Motion passes. Item 19 is the recommendation consideration and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of this agenda.
We have one. It was submitted from Chris Haggard to his supervisor on August 7th. Recommend acceptance.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the contract for the purchase of real property stated by Dr. Simpson.
Second. There's been a motion and a second to approve the support handbook for 2023, 2024. Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salie?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven, nine, zero, and ace.
Motion passes. Item 19 is the recommendation consideration and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of this agenda.
We have one. It was submitted from Chris Haggard to his supervisor on August 7th. Recommend acceptance.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the contract for the purchase of real property stated by Dr. Simpson.
Second. There's been a motion and a second to approve the support handbook for 2023, 2024. Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salie?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven, nine, zero, and ace.
Motion passes. Item 19 is the recommendation consideration and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of this agenda.
We have one. It was submitted from Chris Haggard to his supervisor on August 7th. Recommend acceptance.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the contract for the purchase of real property stated by Dr. Simpson.
Second. There's been a motion and a second to approve the support handbook for 2023, 2024. Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salie?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven, nine, zero, and ace.
Motion passes. Item 19 is the recommendation consideration and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of this agenda.
We have one. It was submitted from Chris Haggard to his supervisor on August 7th. Recommend acceptance.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the contract for the purchase of real property stated by Dr. Simpson.
Second. There's been a motion and a second to approve the support handbook for 2023, 2024. Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salie?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven, nine, zero, and ace.
Motion passes. Item 19 is the recommendation consideration and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of this agenda.
We have one. It was submitted from Chris Haggard to his supervisor on August 7th. Recommend acceptance.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the resignation of Chris Haggard.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the resignation of Chris Haggard. Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salie?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven, nine, zero, and ace.
Motion passes. Item 19 is the recommendation consideration and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of this agenda.
We have one. It was submitted from Chris Haggard to his supervisor on August 7th. Recommend acceptance.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the contract for the purchase of real property stated by Dr. Simpson.
Second. There's been a motion and a second to approve the support handbook for 2023, 2024. Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salie?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven, nine, zero, and ace.
Motion passes. Item 19 is the recommendation consideration and action upon administrator's handbook and salary schedule not including the superintendent for 2023, 2024.
I make a motion that we approve administrator's handbook and salary schedule not including for the superintendent for 2023, 2024.
Second. There's been a motion and a second to approve the administrator's handbook and salary schedule not including the superintendent for 2023, 2024. Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salie?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven, nine, zero, and ace.
Motion passes. Item 19 is the recommendation consideration and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of this agenda.
We have one. It was submitted from Chris Haggard to his supervisor on August 7th. Recommend acceptance.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the contract for the purchase of real property stated by Dr. Simpson.
Second. There's been a motion and a second to approve the support handbook for 2023, 2024. Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salie?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven, nine, zero, and ace.
Motion passes. Item 19 is the recommendation consideration and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of this agenda.
We have one. It was submitted from Chris Haggard to his supervisor on August 7th. Recommend acceptance.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the resignation of Chris Haggard.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the resignation of Chris Haggard. Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salie?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven, nine, zero, and ace.
Motion passes. Item 19 is the recommendation consideration and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of this agenda.
We have none.
Item 21 is the adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn. Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salie?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven, nine, zero, and ace.
Motion passes. Item 19 is the recommendation consideration and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of this agenda.
We have one. It was submitted from Chris Haggard to his supervisor on August 7th. Recommend acceptance.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the contract for the purchase of real property stated by Dr. Simpson.
Second. There's been a motion and a second to approve the support handbook for 2023, 2024. Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salie?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven, nine, zero, and ace.
Motion passes. Item 19 is the recommendation consideration and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of this agenda.
We have one. It was submitted from Chris Haggard to his supervisor on August 7th. Recommend acceptance.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the contract for the purchase of real property stated by Dr. Simpson.
Second. There's been a motion and a second to approve the support handbook for 2023, 2024. Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salie?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven, nine, zero, and ace.
Item 14, discussion and motion to rescind the employment of Franklin Ward.
Mr. President, I move we rescind the employment of Franklin Ward.
Second. There's been a motion and a second to rescind the employment of Franklin Ward. Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salie?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven, nine, zero, and ace.
Motion passes. item 13 is recommendation consideration and action upon negotiated agreement between the Guthrie Association of Classroom Teachers and the Guthrie Board of Education for 2023, 2024.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the negotiated agreement between the Guthrie Association of Classroom Teachers and the Guthrie Board of Education for 2023, 2024.
Roll call vote, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Salie?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Seven, nine, zero, and ace.
Item 16 is the recommendation consideration and action upon Support Personnel Handbook for 2023, 2024.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the Support Personnel Handbook for 2023, 2024.
Second.